Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for October 12th, 2020 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Kostick?
Here.
Mr. Claus?
Here.
Dr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Walther?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Seven present and have a prayer.
Okay, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board members have announcements. Dr. Rankin?
Students in grades two through four return. Peoria Public Schools' second, third, and fourth grade students will return to in-person learning on an A-B schedule starting Monday, October 26th. For those families with students returning to in-person instruction, make sure to listen to your principal's weekly announcements to stay up to date on announcements and protocols at your school.
Other announcements? Mrs. Kostick?
Principal Appreciation Week, School Bus Safety Week. Next week, Peoria Public Schools will recognize two very important groups of people whose work since March has been particularly invaluable. The week of October 19th through the 23rd is Principal Appreciation Week and School Bus Safety Week. Thursday, October 22nd is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Peoria Public Schools' 27 principals and 24 assistant principals are leaders, mentors, and advocates for our building's staff members and our families first and frequent connection with the district. Our Transportation Department staff members deliver meals and instructional materials to students in the spring and are now making sure that our buses are safe and sanitized every day. Please take the time to say thank you to these important team members. Thank you.
Other announcements?
Yes, I have one, President Shaw.
Go ahead, Vice President Wilson.
Virtual parent-teacher conferences will be held on Monday, October 19th, and Tuesday, October 20th. Please check your principal's announcements to learn how to schedule a conference with your students' teachers. Friday, October 16th, is the midterm of the first semester and the end of the first grading period. Midterms grade reports will be sent to parents on Wednesday, October 21st.
Other announcements? Mr. Walther?
Yeah, I've got two here. First one is the Peoria Public Schools' 2020 United Way Campaign begins October 9th and will run through October 30th. Our support and investment in United Way has a direct impact on our students and families. The pandemic has only exacerbated the need for a range of support and services in our community. The United Way partnered with PPS during the spring and summer months to provide consistent and nutritious meals to our students when they were not in school buildings. A United Way ambassador will be reaching out in each school. Our focus this year is on increasing our participation in the number of contributions from each building. Any amount you can give will help benefit our students and families, our school district, and Peoria community. And the second one is Fire Prevention Week Poster Contest. The Peoria Fire Department is resurrecting its annual Fire Prevention Week Poster Contest, renamed the Ernie Russell Fire Prevention Week Poster Contest in honor of Fire Chief Ernie Russell. The theme for this year's contest is "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen." So far in 2020, the Peoria Fire Department has responded to 75 cooking fires, 21 of which developed into house fires. To say stave while cooking the fire, while cooking, the Fire Department recommends, and they wrote this, I didn't, "Keep an eye on what you fry. Stand by your pan. Turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Keep a lid or baking sheet close by." The Ernie Russell Fire Prevention Week Poster Contest is open to all grade levels. Due to COVID-19 school closings, students can email their posters to aartist@peoria.gov.org or mail it to Fire Central 505 Northeast Monroe Street, Peoria, Illinois 61603. Include the child's name and age.
Thank you, Mr. Walther. Mrs. Ross?
Sure. Fall break. Peoria Public Schools will be on fall break on Wednesday, October 21st through Friday, October 23rd. We hope our families have a relaxing break and stay safe and healthy for school to resume on October 26th.
Thank you, Mrs. Ross. Any other, Mr. Claus, did you have an announcement? Okay, so SAT exams. High school seniors will take the SAT exam this coming Wednesday, October 14th. This SAT is a graduation requirement. Transportation will be provided from hub locations. Please see your principal's Sunday announcements for hub locations and pickup times. Students must arrive at 7:30 a.m. Masks are required. Students will be screened for wellness and grab-and-go breakfast will be available. Cell phones and smartwatches will be collected and returned after the test. Information on which entrances should be used at each high school are in the principal's Sunday announcement. And then immunizations and physicals. Immunizations and physicals for kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade, and 12th grade students must be completed by October 15th. Schedule an appointment with your family practitioner today or make an appointment at the in-school health clinic at Treewind School, Manuel High School, or Peoria High School. Please contact your school nurse if you need assistance. Okay, Dr. Carr, did you have any?
No, not today. Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on to awards and recognitions. First, we have the Those Who Excel Award winner for Administrator of the Year. Dr. Jerry Bell will be presenting.
Good evening, President Shaw, Vice President Wilson, School Board members, and Dr. Carratt. As the Executive Director of Middle Schools, I have witnessed firsthand Mr. Tom Blumer's continued exceptional administrative skills and knowledge during this, his sixth year as Principal Lincoln K-8 School. Not only has Mr. Blumer continuously pursued professional development opportunities to further enhance his administrator skills and knowledge, but he also serves as a mentor and continuously develops the instructional leadership capacity of his assistant principals. As a matter of fact, three of Mr. Blumer's more recent assistant principals are currently principals in the district. Mr. Dan Hiles, Principal of Dr. Maude Sanders Primary School; Mrs. Heidi Baron, Principal of Keller Primary School; and Dr. Michelle Cruz, Principal of Next Door Von Steuben Middle School. As Principal of Lincoln K-8 School, Mr. Blumer has led the charge of establishing a school culture and climate conducive to significantly reducing the number of student office referrals and out-of-school suspensions. He does this by ensuring teachers are implementing engaging, relevant lessons in their classrooms. As evidence, I paraphrase what one of his teachers recently wrote, quote, "Mr. Blumer is encouraging. He wants and inspires Lincoln K-8 teachers to try new things in the classroom, even if it flops. He never creates gotcha moments in the classroom and uses every day to help teachers get even better. Mr. Blumer is always available to stop in and see a new technique or project a teacher decides to try and give genuine helpful feedback, no matter how busy his days are. He always reassures teachers that students thrive when teachers can teach how they want to, and he never discriminates against teaching styles," end quote. With Mr. Blumer, the accolades do not stop with Lincoln's teachers. They also extend to Lincoln's students. The following is what one of Mr. Blumer's now former students recently wrote. "To whom it may concern, I am a student at Lincoln K-8 School, and I have personally been able to witness all that our principal, Mr. Blumer, does for the students and school as well. One example of his extreme kindness is here during recently COVID-19 has made it to where we are unable to have our eighth grade graduation at the school. So he, as well as some of our teachers, came up with a solution to have a drive-through graduation. My family and I don't own a car, so he insisted that he take us to the school and back so I'll be able to participate in my graduation this year. He also tries to work with students on their own to see what they may need to help them excel in school and to help us be our best. He is always kind to other staff members and parents as well, and I think that he's, I think that says a lot about a person's character. He also does a lot for the community. He recently helped put up an outdoor library so local kids can read and enjoy books closer to their homes. Next to the library is a little food pantry so families can have food also. So with all of this being said, I and many others believe that our principal, Mr. Blumer, is the best choice for this award and would thank you sincerely if you chose him. As evidenced by those who know him best, there is no Peoria Public Schools Administrator more deserving for the Those Who Excel Administrator of the Year Award than Mr. Tom Blumer. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Blumer on his selection of this prestigious award as he comes forward and shares a few words. Mr. Blumer."
Thank you for those kind words, Dr. Bell, President Shaw, Vice President Wilson, Dr. Carratt. I want to thank you for this incredible honor. I know that the many who have come before me, some great colleagues have received this, and I'm just humbled to be in their footsteps. I think it's important, something you know about me, I taught. I was in the classroom for 19 years. So I think that's unusual, but it does frame how I approach being a principal. I am very empathetic, as a good teacher would be, to anybody who walks in my building. But like many others that came before me, the trail was blazed by some wonderful people who took me under their wing. And so I look back almost 20 years now, and when I walked into Von Steuben Middle School as an assistant principal and knew nothing, and Dave Overfell completely changed my mindset. Just a wonderful man, taught me how to run a school operationally, instructionally, building good relationships with teachers as well as students and parents. So I was there for five years, and then I went to Treewind under Cheryl Ellis, and she was awesome. I greatly enjoyed working in the Treewind community, very different than Von Steuben, but it really opened my eyes to what an urban educator can do. Treewind is a tough school, but Cheryl showed me that with love and the right approach that you can change lives. So those were my two main mentors who really formed how I approach being a leader in the school. I've been at three schools as a principal since then, Calvin Coolidge, Woodruff, and now Lincoln K-8. Now, three of those schools, although there are many similarities because they're all students, and all students are the same in many ways, they're very different in many ways, too. Calvin Coolidge in this small little enclave in West Peoria, and that staff there took me under their wing and showed me how to bring in a community. It's West Peoria, it's small. And so we really got out there and engaged the community. Although that's true, in every school, you have to engage the community. It was especially important there. At Woodruff, we had three schools at the time. We had the Career and Technical Center, we had the Safe School, which is the county school where students came if they were expelled, and then we had the Alternative School. All three of those schools were so different, but the approach by the staff there was to completely think out of the box. You had students who didn't fit the traditional mold. And so I took from there that there are so many different approaches to teaching. There's no one right way, and that staff really opened my eyes. And then finally, Lincoln K-8, six years ago. When I walked over there, crossed the field, that was a tough school. Still is a tough school in many ways. But because I had a staff that showed such incredible resilience, if you look at my staff, they aren't much different. They're different, but as far as turnover, they stuck with it. And because they stuck with it, we have a school that has turned around and continues to make progress. So somebody told me this is pandering, but I love this district. It has taught me so much, and I can't wait to continue being the principal at that school and leading. But President Shaw, this may not be the place, but I think I have some questions for you, and it's kind of controversial, so I don't have the podium very often. So I've heard that if you're Principal of the Year, that the school board sends you to Paris for a full year, on sabbatical, visiting different cafes and an occasional school. Fabian Daniels, I'm sorry, told me that this was the case, and she wanted me to bring that and ask you if that is the case. Is that the case? Will I be going to Paris?
Respectfully, we'll defer to legal counsel.
Okay, well, that's strike one. My French lessons, I'm just going to stop then. The other piece, and I just have to bring this up, is that I heard that for a full year, that the people in the community must now refer to me as Sir Thomas. Is this true?
Respectfully, we'll defer to the mayor of Peoria.
All right, okay. And I guess the final one is, and this might be the biggest, and I was too, it's too bad he isn't here today, because I heard that Terry Knapp has to be nice to me.
He's in Florida.
Oh, he's in Florida. Well, that's being nice to me then, okay?
On that one, I will defer to Mr. Willis. Mr. Willis, if the board salaries can be increased by three, by a factor of three, then we'll do that.
Let me get this right.
For the record, board members do not get paid.
Seriously, I greatly appreciate this honor. I am humbled and so thankful. Thank you to everybody.
Mr. B, open it.
At some point, I will open this.
And he cleaned up. He looked great today.
Next, we have a presentation by Principal Blumer on the early Career Educator of the Year.
And this is how he is during meetings. Superintendent meetings, he's a comedian.
Well, I have the honor of introducing the, actually, the person who nominated the new Teacher of the Year. I will tell you something about Brandon Jamerson, however, before I bring Mr. Hiles up, who nominated him. I knew Brandon before he became a teacher. He was at ISU, and my wife over there was his supervising teacher. Or no, that's not right. Yeah, okay. Supervisor from ISU, guided him through ISU. So she told me that she had this wonderful teacher. We had an opening in math, and I said, "Great, I'd love to interview him, tell me something about him," all sorts of great things. But she said he was not from an urban area, that he lived out in the suburbs, and I thought, "Oh, well, I'm not so sure about that." We hired him because he gave a great interview and because my wife completely endorsed him. He completely proved all my consternation and nervousness and anxiousness about hiring him because he is everything you'd want in a teacher, let alone a new teacher. He's innovative, he loves students, he loves to try things. Somebody used the word flop. He flops sometimes, doesn't bother him at all, and those are the qualities that I want in a teacher. So I'm going to bring up Mr. Hiles, who's going to give the official nomination. Mr. Hiles?
Thank you, Mr. Blumer. Board of Education, Dr. Carratt, thank you for having me tonight. It's my privilege to be here to recognize Brandon Jamerson, sixth-grade math teacher at Lincoln K-8, as Peoria Public Schools' Early Educator Award recipient. Like most new teachers, Brandon would be the first to tell you, he had his share of peaks and valleys while he navigated through his first couple of years as a teacher. There were two things, though, that really stood out to me regarding Brandon, his innovative practices in the classroom and his ability to reach students. Mr. Jamerson learned early on that giving students the keys to the car and letting them have ownership in their learning would pay dividends. Using depth of knowledge charts, Mr. Jamerson provides students with varying ability levels, different paths, rather, to take in approaching content. The result of this is a classroom which has students working at high levels of autonomy and at levels of cognitive complexity appropriate for their needs. While most young teachers are nervous about administrators coming to the room, Mr. Jamerson would actually text us and say, "Hey, come into my room. There's something cool that I want to show you guys," and we would come and watch him. And whether it was turning his classroom into a slope-intercept plane or giving students the ability to work together to problem-solve real-life scenarios using math, Mr. Jamerson has put a lot of fun, energy, and authentic learning into his sixth-grade math class. Lincoln K-8 student Alberto Sepulveda remarked in his nomination letter that "Mr. Jamerson makes math fun and easy," and also that someone can buy 95 boxes of pizza and not wonder why. Alberto also went on to say that he knows that Mr. Jamerson cares about the students and their learning and that his hard work doesn't go unnoticed. Given the time that we're currently living in, it's more important than ever to be innovative in our approach to teaching and learning, and Mr. Jamerson embodies those characteristics. It is my sincere honor to introduce to you Early Educator Award recipient, Brandon Jamerson.
This is much, oh, sorry, this is much different. I'm used to talking to 12-year-olds who just are a lot of fun to be around, so this is a whole different crew. I, when I tell people I teach middle school, they're like, "Oh, my," and I'm like, "Yeah, I love it." So that's what I do. I'm really appreciative of the administrators past and present that I've had at Lincoln K-8 for letting me be, letting me be me in the classroom. I do some crazy things, and some people would be like, "What are you doing?" I'm like, "We're going to try it. What's the worst that's going to happen? I mean, either you do really well, or we teach the students growth mindset, so there's a lesson in flopping." So I'm really appreciative of my administrator, Mr. Blumer, and Mr. Hiles at the time for nominating me for this award. Thank you.
Congratulations once again to our award recipients and to the nominees for this year. Next, we have district presentations, first being Hispanic Heritage Month. Mrs. Anna Rose, Director of ELL Services.
Good evening, buenas noches. Dr. Carratt, President Shaw, and the board. First of all, before we start with our presentation, I want to recognize and appreciate Dr. Carratt for allowing us to showcase heritage, culture, and pride. She not only fosters that with the Hispanic community, with African-American community, just in general, all diversity that I've seen in the district. This month, as you know, is set aside to recognize culture, language, tradition, family backgrounds, and highlight great accomplishments for many Hispanics globally. This is a great opportunity to educate and bring cultural awareness in our schools and promote that diversity that we want to see every day. There are over 35 different languages and customs in our school district alone. The most common language is Spanish, followed by Arabic and French. We are fortunate in the district to have a dual-language program in five different buildings, which includes Harrison, Lincoln, Glen Oak, Whittier, and Valeska. The goal of the program is not only to promote bilinguality in two languages with academic leadership, but also to promote global diversity and culture. Dual-language students attend four days a week, with Fridays being project-based learning. The students learn about different topics. For the month of September 15th through October 15th, we focus on Hispanic heritage. The teachers focus on teaching students the different aspects of the culture, including agriculture, famous Hispanics, artists, music, building structures, dance, sports, and different activists throughout our country. Students have the opportunity to compare what they learn about these Hispanics and other cultures and races as well. For example, Sylvia Mendoza is the Ruby Bridges story for Hispanics. Like Ruby, Sylvia's parents wanted their daughter to attend a higher-ranking school exclusively was set back then for whites. They wanted their daughter and child to obtain this higher-level education rather than going to the Mexican school that was assigned to brown-skinned students. This was a struggle that everybody can recognize and learn from, and the struggles and challenges for these students that we face are current in our schools. So this is a story that not only highlights the Hispanics, but also the African-American, and we find opportunities to compare, get together, and look at the things that are common, but yet different. I like to also point out the different projects that are shared behind me. We have art projects, we have research that children did on the different artists, sports figures, landmarks, and behind me is a showcase of boxes that show structures of bridges in all of Latin America. I invite everybody to, after the meeting, have the opportunity to come over and really look at the details and the fine research and skills that these students are learning, which takes them to a higher-level cognitive complexity in their learning. They're not only writing, they're researching, learning computer skills, and really enhancing their learning by learning about their culture. I also want to take this time to let you know about some of the famous Hispanics that are in our community, and one being Maria Miranda. Maria Miranda is a community instructor who teaches floor-cloric dance to children in our community. She is not paid, but she goes to a parking lot in the back down the street, and in the parking lot, they practice dance, floor-cloric dance, to promote the culture. So we have her daughter, who is dressed in a typical costume that they use to promote dancing. There's different regions in Mexico, there's different regions in Mexico, and what they do is they teach the different cultures and the different dances and the different aspects of the different regions in Mexico. So she not only does this free of charge, but helps children stay off the streets and learn the pride. learn the pride of their tradition and heritage. We also have our very first foreign exchange teacher who was brought from Spain. Her name is Lucia Noguera. Lucia, you want to stand, please? She is dressed in a typical flamenco Spaniard outfit, and her daughter is as well, and also has promoted the culture in the schools. I'm going to have her talk a little bit to you about how this started in Peoria.
Hi, good evening. Twenty years ago, I was the first teacher hired by the district. Mr. Hinton was the superintendent at the time, and he was aware of the need for bilingual teachers. So I started at Harrison with Mrs. Perkins. And after three years, we, Mr. Hinton and I, I went to him, I didn't know what I was doing. I'm going to say it right now. I said, "We should start a bilingual program." This is, I went to ISU and I was like, "That is so exciting." And Mr. Hinton said, "Yeah, let's do it. You are going to be the pilot teacher." And I said, "Oh." So I started crying, but that was a different story. So since then, now it's in many different schools. We were very sure what we were going to do, but the difference in the kids, and I have to thank Mrs. Rose because she is always like fighting for us. The difference between knowing what, you know, what you are being taught and being appreciated and showing that they care for what, you know, who you are, your language, is unbelievable. Those kids, I used to teach second and third grade, and at the end of the year, I was like, "I couldn't believe it." You know, as a teacher, you study, and you say, "No, no, I don't think I can do this." But it was just blooming. So I'm very thankful, very proud to work for the district because they, I mean, other school districts might say, "We appreciate diversity, but we are the ones fighting and showing it." You show by doing, not by saying. So this district is doing and not just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're constantly working on how to perfect our curriculum, our program, and help students become the best that they can be and be proud of who they are. I know the values, the culture, the language was maintained by me, by my parents. When I came to the United States, I didn't speak any English. I came to the United States speaking only Spanish. I learned English as a kindergartner and actually was retained in kindergarten because they thought I had a learning problem because I couldn't communicate. And that's why I fight so hard to make sure that students are not looked at as inferior or have a learning disabilities because they can't speak the language. It's always a great idea to embrace and not take away the culture and the roots and background of people, especially when they're blessed with two cultures and two languages. Thank you.
Comments from board members? Mrs. Ross?
Thank you. I wanted to say, I'm happy that you're still here. I was on the board when you were brought from Spain. I tried to get them to let me go to Spain, but they wouldn't. But it was, it was, it was a number of teachers that were brought in, and you're the only one that's left, is that correct?
From the first year, yes.
Yes, from the first.
And August 2nd, I celebrated 20 years.
Right, I remember that. I was right here when you came. And so, thank you for staying.
Okay. We have a second presentation on the Legacy Project. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President Shaw. Good evening, everyone. I do have an announcement to make. The live streaming YouTube channel is not, we're having some challenges with that, is that correct, Mrs. Saipal? Do we have any advice for them? Is there, can they switch to another platform?
They can go to Comcast Channel 22.
So you can go to Comcast Channel 22. I apologize for that.
The video of the meeting will be uploaded to YouTube afterwards.
Okay, and the video.
YouTube is not picking it up.
So YouTube is not picking it up for some reason, but the video will be uploaded later. In the meantime, you can go to Comcast Channel 22 and tune in. So we do have a nice group of individuals who follow us at every board meeting, so I really apologize for that. So, Ms. Ross, I know people were texting you, asking you what was going on. So thank you for letting me know. Just thank you to Senora Rose. She's an amazing director, executive director for our ELL program. Very passionate, knows instruction very, very well. We do have some plans, actually, of expanding that dual, the dual-language program, and she and I are working on that, so stay tuned. There's a lot of interest. We have a lot of, she mentioned the schools where we have those bilingual programs going on and the four buildings she mentioned, and she has waiting lists for those programs. And those kids, you should, you should see, they're speaking English and they're speaking Spanish, and it's, it's really, really impressive. And so the sky is the limit for us in that area. So I, I have two friends that I've asked to present to you on this Legacy Project, and it's a nice, it was not planned that way, that I picked up right after Mrs. Rose, and she talked a lot about diversity and respect and culture and inclusivity and those sorts of things. So this next presentation has a lot of that theme. So I'll start off by just saying, a recent mandate that was signed in August of 2019 states that, states the following. "In public schools, the teaching of history shall include a study of the roles and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people in the history of this country and in, and in the state of Illinois." So the law merely states merely that the teaching of US and Illinois history in public schools shall include a study of the roles and contributions of LGBTQ+ people. LGBT students in Illinois are, in some cases, victims of harassment and bullying because of their status. And part of the reason why that happens is because the general student population don't necessarily get an accurate portrayal and understanding of lesbians, gays, and transgender individuals. They do not necessarily hear the positive stories. So the goal for Peoria Public Schools is to continue to create inclusive classrooms for students of all gender identities and sexual orientations. So Peoria Public Schools has two amazing partners that I've been working with for years, who have been working with us on the curriculum, on the professional development, and the implementation of this mandate. So the first partner is with Friends, the organization, and it's called Friends, and the executive director is Derek Kilmer. And the second partner is Holt Center for Healthy Living and Central Illinois, and the executive director there is Andrea Parker. Andrea has identified Becca Mathis as the representative assigned to Peoria Public Schools to work with us on this project. And Becca is kind of almost like our employee. She's been with us for many, many years. So again, over the years, both organizations specifically provide, provide lessons that address LGBTQ+ terms and topics. And what I like about this group is that all educators from the Holt Center and from Friends, and actually, we do work with Center for Prevention of Abuse, but all of their educators who come into our classrooms to work with our students are trained, they receive comprehensive and inclusive training. And just FYI, Illinois is the fifth state to require teaching about LGBTQ figures. So I've asked two individuals, these two individuals that I've mentioned, Derek and Becca, they are the co-chairs of the Peoria Public Schools Legacy Curriculum Advisory Committee. I would like them to present a little bit more to you, and as it relates to the mandate is called 246. So where is Derek? Oh, I guess they're online. Derek is online and Becca's online, are they online? Okay, perfect. So welcome and take it away.
Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Karat, for the wonderful introductions. Speaking here is Becca Mathis. I'm the Adolescent Health Coordinator at the Holt Center for Healthy Living, and I am one of the co-chair members for this committee that was established by Peoria Public Schools. And then I will go ahead and let Derek introduce himself as well.
Good afternoon. Thank you again, Dr. Karat and Becca. My name is Derek Kilmer, Executive Director of Central Illinois Friends, and I've been working on the LGBTQ curriculum for Illinois for the, over a year now, with the Legacy Project in Chicago. And I'm proud to be in Peoria, Illinois, docking to a school that is going to be putting this on the forefront to actually pick up the mantle and run with this. So we're excited about the innovative progress that this school is doing, so thank you.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move to the next slide. We, today in this presentation, are going to start with just Derek and myself to represent the committee, but moving forward, we hopefully will have the opportunity to have other committee members join us for these meetings as well. So our mission and our vision, we'll start with the mission, to develop an integrated curriculum for all students that shares the history of LGBTQ+ people's roles and contributions. And again, this is specific to instruction of history curriculum. And then the larger vision of Peoria Public Schools as a district-wide representative of implementing first through 12th grade curriculum that will teach and enhance the knowledge and contributions of LGBTQ people to all students. So as Dr. Karat mentioned, there are some benefits that we would like to share regarding inclusive education, and some of these tenets have actually already been implemented within Peoria Public Schools regarding our sexual and reproductive youth education program. So especially our middle and high school populations are very familiar with a lot of the foundations that we'll be discussing today. But some benefits that I wanted to share with you all and kind of bring to the forefront of your mind include, number one, inclusive environments as well as inclusive education is beneficial to improving overall school climate. So there is evidence that the improvement of school climate to be inclusive of all students, regardless of gender identity, sexual orientation, is going to have a positive effect on the educational outcomes and success of the students. We also are all very well aware how important representation is for young people in the space of education. So when LGBTQ+ students have the opportunity to identify with people like them who made important contributions to society throughout history, that also has positive effect as well as positive outcomes in addition to student success. So we'll discuss health outcomes very shortly. Outside the scope, though, of students who may identify as a part of that community, inclusive education is also helping other students celebrate diversity. So non-LGBTQ+ students being provided a fuller sense or a fuller picture of the importance of what it means to live in a diverse society. And then lastly, I want to continue this point to discuss improved health outcomes. Inclusive education has a significant impact on not only the culture and climate of a school as well as a district, but also the literal health of the students that we serve. So this data actually comes from a national survey that identified that when schools enhance their curriculum to be inclusive of LGBTQ+ roles and contributions in history as well as inclusive curriculum and language throughout the school, that more than 75% of the students in the schools with that inclusive curriculum said their peers were accepting. So their sense of acceptedness as well as safety within their own school environment was improved. That is compared to students that reported only 39.6% of them feeling accepted or safe at their schools, and those schools were without an inclusive curriculum. So really, the point to be made here is that it's not just about having a fuller sense of a diverse and wider understanding of our history for our students, but actually impacting our students' health as well. So the next slide is also to reiterate what Dr. Karat began to say with her introduction of this initiative, which is to say that unfortunately, we are becoming very well aware of the adverse health outcomes that affect our LGBTQ+ youth. So as you read through this slide, we identify multiple areas related to adolescent health that are impacted negatively solely on the fact of the experiences and the adverse experiences that LGBTQ+ youth may experience. So greater risk of experiencing mental health issues, high risk of substance use, greater risk of violence victimization, both in school and outside of school, and greater risks related to sexual health. Some of these risks can be addressed with more comprehensive education and roles and supports for students, but a significant impact can be made just by making environments safer for students and incorporating more inclusive curriculum, which is exactly what the Legacy curriculum is intended to do, especially related to history instruction. So our committee process is pretty early within the timeline here. This was a project that I would say gained a lot of steam really quickly because we have amazing community partners on board. We have an extremely supportive district as well as district leadership to acknowledge the importance of really getting this moving. So the committee that we were able to put together relatively quickly was actually thanks to the wonderful connections and the work that both Central Illinois Friends and the Holt Center have already done in this arena for not only the district, but the committee as well. So we have folks representing from Unity Point, from Eureka College, we have folks representing from PFLAG, which is a local parents and families group, support group for individuals a part of the community. But the committee process itself has really been driven because of the folks who are involved. We, of course, also have representation from the district, including counselors, as well as our social studies department and our principals as well. So that committee, we wanted to make sure it was very inclusive of not only the individuals that would be implementing the curriculum, but individuals that would be supporting young people in the classroom and in outside spaces, and that could really inform the best practice way to integrate something like an inclusive curriculum into history education. So one of the major processes was then to identify and review the Legacy Curriculum, which shortly I'll have Derek expand upon what that curriculum is exactly and why it aligns so very well to fulfilling the Illinois House Bill mandate of 246. In addition to that, though, the advisory committee identified the need for professional development opportunities for both the staff who will be integrating this curriculum into their existing curriculum, as well as offering professional development for any support staff within the schools. To acknowledge, again, that our LGBTQ+ youth experience significant negative health outcomes as well as experiences. So to be able to improve that overall culture and climate, the advisory committee felt it was wise that folks also had professional development to support the integration of this curriculum. So these findings were presented to the superintendent, and the three-pronged approach that we will discuss shortly was created. So here we are at step five with providing updates to you all, and we will also share a timeline for where we are going in the very short future. So point six and seven of the process are things that are already in plan as in terms of, or sorry, in place in terms of what we are moving on to next, which include presenting the curriculum itself to the social studies department for feedback from the folks who will actually be implementing that curriculum, and then developing a more formal implementation plan and timeline to provide to you all shortly in the future. So this is the three-pronged approach that I mentioned before, which contains the professional development aspect, the Legacy Curriculum itself, and then also acknowledging that there will be some level of community support that will likely need to be provided to make sure that this inclusive education is truly embraced in the way that it is meant to be. So I will pause for a moment here, and we'll get into more in-depth of the particular safe zone training and things like that in just a moment, but I did want Derek to speak a little bit to the structure of the Legacy Curriculum, as it may be structured in a way that's not inherently obvious to understand, but makes a lot of sense in terms of age-appropriate content for our students.
Yeah, thank you, Becca. And I'm sure you are looking at this and going, "What? Another curriculum? Another thing we have to learn? And just yet another, you know, adding to our jobs here as educators." But we really did have educators in mind. We have educators on the, on the committee that created this curriculum, and it was meant to be as easy as possible. So to start off... So, to start off, the Level One, as you can see, grades three through five, and they go up. This is base-level stuff. We're simply talking about the same people we talk about already in grades three and five through five, but we're adding the fact of who they are. You know, sometimes in elementary, we talk about the king's wives and the civil rights person's wives and these individuals. We talk about their wives and their husbands and their significant others, and we talk about their lives. We're just adding who they are. Many people, I don't know if you know, that are sitting in this room right now that George Washington Carver was in fact a gay man, or that Illinois Roosevelt was a lesbian woman, or that Leonardo da Vinci had a husband, Bynard Ruston, James Baldwin, Harvey Milk. The list goes on and on. These are people that we already talked to and about in these grades, and it's easy to talk about these subjects in a very age-appropriate way. And what I mean by that is, say, we're talking, today's topic of discussion is George Washington Carver. You would, as a teacher, click on George Washington Carver on the online curriculum, and depending on what grade level you are, will be what talks about, will give you the language to be able to talk about to those, to your students. So, whether it's who they are and what their accomplishments are, or whether it's, this is what they also did as a social action individual to progress the LGBTQ civil rights movement or the rights, our rights. So, it kind of goes up through the grade levels, and it provides multiple different levels per person that we talk about, or event. You know, whether we're talking about, say, you want to talk about World War II, and you're a history teacher in junior high. You could type in "World War II LGBTQ", and it'll tell you everything that an LGBTQ individual helped during World War II, or that was an experience that LGBTQ people had in that time, like the Pink Triangle, which just portioned, which imprisoned the LGBTQ population that did not get free after liberation of Germany. It discusses, say today, I'd be miffed if I did not discuss about Two-Spirited People. Two-Spirited People, today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, by the way. So happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. And Two-Spirited People were something that Native American people celebrated, where you were, which is basically transgender individuals in the Native American community. This is something that we knew a long, long time ago. This isn't something new. This isn't something that we just developed with science and medical advancements. This is something that is enriched in our history. And this just kind of adds to that stance. Now with that being said, this is when it gets easy. Not only is the curriculum easy for the teachers and the educators to be able to click on the events and define what represents the student that's asking the questions, our education that Becca is going to get in depth with is going to provide them with the essential tools to be able to handle those questions. And at the end of the day, we understand that the apprehension of doing this, that isn't the fact that people are anti-LGBTQ. The apprehension is fear of making a mistake, fear of not knowing what to say at the right time. That is why we are here. The thing that Peoria Public Schools has that a lot of schools don't is a relationship with Central Illinois Friends and Holt Center for Healthy Living, and Center for Prevention of Abuse. This community is enriched in individuals and ability to help and reach out. And if we can't give you the best tools, maybe we can serve you the best way we can to be able to step in and provide this very easy approach.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll give a little bit more background next on the professional development that we, as a committee, also would advise to the district and taking kind of two different tiers to this professional development. So the Safe Zone Training is a training that has long existed to build capacity for individuals to engage in conversations, to answer questions related to LGBTQ plus issues and concerns, to connect people to resources and the help that they might need if they're struggling with anything related to mental health, and also just for folks to feel like they're better well-versed in the ever-changing terminology related to the community. So the participants who would be ideally identified as participating for the Safe Zone Training would be the folks who would be integrating this legacy curriculum into their existing history instruction. So, our folks from our Social Studies Department, as well as our school counselors, because we obviously recognize that they are oftentimes the first line or the first referral for students who have more questions or need more help. But then also, we wanted to expand the Safe Zone Training to include any individual who may just be a staff member outside the scope of history instruction or as a counselor or social worker, and just may be particularly interested in being identified as knowing more, being open to having conversations, and knowing referrals within the community to help support young people. Any staff member that felt like they wanted to play a more active role in facilitating that inclusive discussion and that positive climate within the school. So, the goal of the Safe Zone Training is really to learn a more in-depth way to support our students and learn more about LGBTQ plus terms and identities, examine prejudice, examine implicit bias, assumptions that may be made about the community, especially if you are not familiar with a lot of these terms, and also a discussion of privilege and how that plays a role related to a person's gender identity as well as their sexual orientation. So the Safe Zone Training is a much more in-depth training that would be provided to folks who are especially interested or then identified as being, need to be given those skills to facilitate much deeper conversations if they were to arise in a classroom. The Safe and Supportive Environments Training would be the other aspect of this professional development identified by the community where the participants would really just be all other Peoria Public Schools teachers and staff. So the Safe and Supportive Environments Training actually comes from the Centers for Disease Control Division of Adolescent School Health, which really is a sector that arose from the sexual health education initiatives across our country. But it is also a tool that we've been using related to our comprehensive sexual health education to help empower and prepare the folks in the schools who are identified as kind of the go-to individuals to answer questions related to sexual and reproductive health, and then provide referrals to young people if they need more information. The whole goal, though, of Safe and Supportive Environments is to really increase student engagement in school life and also helping them feel supported and connected, not only in school, but to their community in general. So the idea, just like the training has in its name, is to really build a safe and supportive environment that's inclusive of all students, that obviously supports their academic success, but very much supports their health and wellness as well. So there is a note here that we included to say that the community workshops and presentations would include foundations of safe and supportive environments as it's less intensive of a training, but still provides the opportunity for open and honest conversation. So kind of the two realms for professional development identified. To give a little bit more background on the legacy curriculum, Derek gave us very specific examples about how the curriculum would be utilized and integrated into the existing history curriculum. But we just did want to make a note to say that this wasn't just made out of thin air, that our committee didn't throw this together in a week. This is an existing curriculum that has been in the works for a very long time. So I'll go ahead and let Derek jump back in and explain kind of where this curriculum came from and the folks who were involved in this particular project development.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so there's an organization called The Legacy Project who teamed up with the Safe School Alliance, and we pulled in people from all over the state, professors from Bradley University, Illinois State University, U of I, and so on, to put together a comprehensive, evidence-based core curriculum. So once again, this is supposed to be a broad approach. There are pieces of this curriculum that are meant to add the in-depth education for grades 11 and 12. But basically, everything before that is just a build-on of what is already being taught to individuals and to students in your schools. So, we're not talking about a, "Okay, this week in LGBTQ education, this is what we're going to be talking about." We're talking about a natural progression and add-on to what we're already being taught in histories and social sciences. Another thing about this, because to make this really hit home with the fact that we have so many educators as a part of, as a lead on this project, they didn't think it was enough just to make this as user-friendly for the teachers. They also wanted to make this user-friendly to parents because they know how important that is. So even parents can access this curriculum and can help their students or themselves better educate themselves. So you have, say you have a parent of a transgender individual or a LGBTQ individual as a whole, and you don't quite know how to talk to them about representation. You can coin the term in the search bar, gay, lesbian, transgender, American history, world history, social sciences, music, pop culture, art. And that's what's going to bring up representation in a core curriculum. The other great thing about this is it hasn't stopped. They're adding new material every week. So this is something that, as years go by, it's just only going to get better and better. With that being said, they, we have also developed a message to three different groups. We've developed a message to the parents. We've developed a message to the teachers. And we've developed a message to LGBTQ youth and the youth as a whole to better understand why it's so important to talk about this, why it's so important to talk about the fact of certain people who did great things in our history were in fact LGBTQ individuals, so that we can focus on the fact that we are a nation of all peoples built by all peoples. That's all I got.
Thank you. Great. So in terms of the proposed curriculum implementation, the committee has decided that the initial phase or Phase One that we are looking to propose for spring 2021 would be to first start with the high schools. So again, going back to the way that this curriculum is structured, it's structured in levels. And it gives some sort of flexibility here for teachers to identify within an age range or a grade range, to be more specific, what type of curriculum may be best suited for their particular classes. So, Level Three and Level Four would be relative to the high school populations. Even though Level Three actually does extend into the later adolescence of middle school, it still would be, we'd be focusing just within the high school population for the first phase of implementation. And then moving forward, the committee, since we are still quite new in terms of the curriculum implementation plan, we have not identified specific start dates for Phase Two and Phase Three, but we have proposed that we would then move from high school to middle school, and then from middle school to elementary school. The idea being that while folks are being trained and given the skills in terms of professional development and how to best support, and then intensively support the curriculum and students themselves, we would also be integrating this curriculum step by step, face by face. So then our next slide would be the proposed timeline of implementation, moving forward from today. So invitations have been sent to some folks regarding the Safe Zone Training in particular. And those invitations will continue to be sent to elicit any interest in participation for the Safe Zone Training. So we're looking to identify those participants before the end of this month, and then actually get those folks trained before the end of November. With the idea being, the sooner that folks are trained in Safe Zone, the sooner they are able to or concretely identify the skills that they may use to then integrate this curriculum and comfortably have those conversations within their classrooms and within their schools. We are planning to provide a presentation to the Social Studies Department for a discussion of the legacy curriculum, how it could best be integrated, and also offer the opportunity for feedback, and that would be later in November. And then we would also then at that time be able to develop a more concrete plan of implementation of the curriculum itself, including specific start dates and an idea of a timeline for those additional phases. We're looking to have the Safe and Supportive Environments Workshop opportunities for the community at least identified and scheduled for the spring of next year or to start in the spring of next year. We would like to have those opportunities identified and prepared before the end of this year. And then the last point here would be to say that those more general professional development opportunities could be done at the very start of the spring semester of 2021 to then provide the opportunity for folks, especially if they're going to be welcoming students back into their physical school environments, they would have an idea of how to better support a positive and inclusive culture and environment, as well as know who those folks are that are more specifically trained in Safe Zone as referral opportunities for additional support. So, the last note that I wanted to leave everybody with was just another mention of the benefit of inclusive education. And inclusive doesn't necessarily always have to mean inclusive of LGBTQ plus youth, but in today's conversation, that is what we're talking about. So I want you to take that lens with what several people, especially in education, may know as curriculum as a window and a mirror. If you're not familiar, the phrasing kind of goes to say that the mirror of curriculum reflects individuals in their own experiences back to themselves, providing them the sense of self-acknowledgement, and not only their identity, but their self-worth, their aspirations for the future. Curriculum can also be a window, though. It offers views of the world that you may not be used to, that you may not be able to particularly or personally identify with, but also gives you the opportunity to understand different perspectives and identities for others, and why that diversity is extremely important. So mirrors and windows as it relates to inclusive curriculum is really meant to provide this full, positive, engaging environment for students to not only build healthy self-concept for students who identify within that community, but also raise that awareness for other children who may not have that opportunity to celebrate that particular type of diversity. So, it really is meant to not just address the types of topics to be integrated within the history curriculum. The purpose of that bill was really meant to say that our schools should be inclusive. The stories of our history that we provide should be diverse, and students should have the opportunity to have mirrors as well as windows throughout all elements of their education. We are starting with this initiative of the Legacy Curriculum Integration to address this House Bill that would provide the opportunity for more inclusive education within history instruction.
Thank you so much, Becca and Derek. Just, you've done such an amazing job. It has been fun working with both of you, continuing to work with you. Board, I think a few key points. It's a resource, and you've heard words like "integrate", and it's fluid, it's not an additional new thing that individuals have to sort of go through extensive training and on. It's just an additional add-on to US history and social studies history, which I think makes our kids a little bit more, it makes the curriculum richer, provides a lot more information, more interesting information, and we're fulfilling that inclusive mandate, which is all good. I think the good news is you did not see a cost, so it's free. I had an opportunity to get on the website. I was given a link, actually Derek sent a link to Dr. Wilson and I, and it is pretty impressive. I will make sure you get an opportunity to sort of just play around with it. It is also standards-aligned, and just very, 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 very well-done, very interactive. And it's all online, as I said, you can search, and amazing information. So, I wanted to kind of wrap up with that. And again, thanking Derek, who is the Executive Director of Friends, and Becca, who works for Holt's. And we have been working with them for years now. And this is an exciting project for us to continue to expand and serve all of our students. Thank you.
Questions from board members, Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Derek, it appears that you guys have used this in some places before. Have you used it, City of Chicago, Chicago suburbs? Was there an area that you've tried this out? Because you had some statistical bearings on how it did help. So has there been a place where you've used this curriculum?
Yeah, so it's a good question. Basically, it's in the Chicago area alone right now, because this is a very new curriculum. We have just rolled this out. In fact, it's been rolled out to the public for the first time just two Fridays ago. However, this has been implemented beforehand in other schools in the Chicago area. I don't have any statistics for you because it's so new. But what I will speak on are some statistical... speak on are some statistics, statistics of other states that have, have, uh, included LGBTQ curriculums, and that would be a decrease, like Massachusetts, uh, saw a decrease in, um, suicide rate, um, they saw a, a decrease in, um, needed mental health, um, mental health counseling, um, they saw a decrease in bullying, um, and, and, uh, they saw a decrease in, in, um, or they saw a, uh, increase in, in, in education in terms of, of, uh, I'm sorry, I'm getting to the end of the day here, I'm stuttering on my words.
Acceptance, Derek, that slide.
I can't think of it right now. But, but what I will say, I thought this was interesting when I was going through statistics the other day, um, this is one that a lot of people that are usually against LGBTQ curriculum think, which is, uh, you don't have to worry, there's no any, there's not any new LGBTQ individuals that come out of this. So that's one thing that, that, uh, the, the people, the writers of the books we've been reading to, to do this is saying that, uh, you know, to, to put any stigma to rest, uh, an increase of LGBTQ education does not mean an increase of LGBTQ individuals. But, uh, but what the main thing it helps is, is your mental health. You know, I actually want to make a point on what Becca said about that because it, she, she, she discussed about how this helps people with their, with their, um, you know, the LGBTQ, they're more likely to struggle with drug, with addictions, and they're more likely to be homeless, and they're more likely to have mental health conditions. Make no mistake, uh, it's a cause and effect, uh, side of things. I think sometimes we get confused that so many LGBTQ people have mental health conditions, and that's not because they were born with mental health conditions which created their LGBTQ-ness. It's their LGBTQ-ness in the United States has created their mental health conditions. By not being accepted, by not having the basic knowledge that they have always existed and that it's okay to be you, and, uh, when, when, when a child is given that freedom to, to understand themselves, um, they have the freedom to finally listen and learn to the curriculums that are being taught. Um, if they're too busy in class debating on who they are and beating themselves up and hating themselves for who they are and fear that they're going to lose their homes or, or their families, um, they're not listening in the classrooms.
No, I wanted to speak, I'm for this curriculum. I think the thing is excellent. Um, one of the things I think a lot of people here don't know, uh, I had a younger brother, um, Peoria Public School graduate at Woodruff, uh, who was gay, uh, ended up being one of the first victims of, um, AIDS in Peoria and has passed away some 15 years ago. So I understand this. The other piece that I have for you is that, I appreciate that you said that, but we as the board are going to have to be the ones to defend this curriculum, and, uh, I can guarantee you now it won't be universally accepted. So I was saying that if we had a board member or two who wanted to be on the steering committee, I think it would be very helpful to, to make this go. So I just wanted your opinion on that.
Well, not only would I love for that board member to be on this committee, I'd love to meet you and hear your experience because, uh, as a Executive Director of Central by Friends, we help people living with HIV, and, um, you know, I don't know if many of you know, but we, we, we team up with Holt to provide the testing in the schools and, uh, for all STIs and HIV. So, uh, yes, uh, full and foremost, I understand that this is, as many people on the board that wants to be on this committee, I would say with, and if I'm not speaking out of turn without Becca, I would say, I would, I would be more than happy to say, if every single one of you wanted to be on the committee, I could say yes.
We've got some legal risk frames.
We more than, more than welcome you to part of this committee. And also, yes, very openly show that you are an advocate for inclusive education and can speak to the importance of not just fulfilling a mandate for the state, but what it really means to be able to support our young people in the schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Other input? Uh, Dr. Rankin?
Uh, I, I had a couple of questions. President Shaw?
Vice President Wilson, I've got Dr. Rankin, and then you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, so thank you very much for, um, for this. Some of my questions are for the committee and some of them are for the district. Um, for the committee, going off of what, um, Mr. Walther said, um, I am, this, and I don't think this is, um, to Derek and Becca, but to the, to the district, there's no elementary, no middle school, and no board member on the committee right now, um, and I think that's a huge concern, um, that we're talking about social studies curriculum and we're talking about the history department. We need to have voices on the committee before we kind of present this to the board. So I guess that's my first concern is, um, it's not a well-rounded committee right now. Do you, like, is, is there a plan to add people to the committee, Dr. Karat? I know Dr. Wilson's on it also.
Yeah, I mean traditionally, we, we, the, the configuration that you saw up there, that's what we've, that's the traditional makeup, but obviously if anybody is interested in being on the committee, just send an email to me and I'll be happy to put them on.
Um, the, uh, my next question, so I have a list of them, so sorry. Uh, my next question is, um, it feels as though this was kind of rushed, knowing that this committee was put together in the fall and we're still in the fall, and I'm wondering how many other curriculums were looked at. So I know that the legacy curriculum is in CPS, and it sounds like they just started implementing it two weeks ago. There are at least two other curriculums that I know of, that I have experience with that have been around longer than that, and I know that, um, before, when we've had kind of curriculum presentations, it's shown a comparison, um, and we didn't get that comparison tonight, and so I'm wondering, um, if the committee did do a comparison and/or when we would be able to see that comparison.
We can, um, actually, we saw that one and we know that it, it ruled out in Chicago, and, um, it's very, 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 um, interactive and student-friendly and, um, but if you have another one that you'd like to share with the committee, they would love to take a look at it. Um, but this one, you know, that's the one that we are familiar with, that's the one, I work with Derek and I work with, uh, Becca, and, uh, this is a continuation of the work that we have done. So, um, you know, that's, that's the one that, that came to the table because as he mentioned, um, there's representative from Bradley University, ISU individuals we're very familiar with, it's been very, very vetted, um, so, uh, we all fell in love with it and said, yes, this included our counselors, the other individuals, but sure, I think it's a good idea to take a look at some of the things that are available. This one is free, um, that's.
The other ones are also, yep. So the other ones I'm aware of are also free, and I just think that it would serve the board well if we could see a comparison, much like we have with other curriculum that have come before us. Not that I, this could be a fantastic curriculum and the one that we end up with, but if we don't do the comparison work, I don't think that, um, we as a district are doing, um, our due diligence to make sure we vetted curriculum for our students, so that's.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point. Um, you know, we've, we've, this is the, this is the one that we looked at and the one we fell in love with, but I haven't seen any, any other, um, any other programs out there or any other curriculum out there actually, so definitely throw it back to the committee. Uh, they're the ones, really not the board, they come and they make, they're the ones that vet everything and then they come to the board with their recommendation. The board does not really, you know, make the decision, the board approves yes or no, but with that being said, it's not a bad idea to, if, so if you have additional, um, curriculum that you'd like to say, hey, uh, team, take a look at this, or take a look at that, I, that, that, that would not be a problem at all. I think that would be embraced and welcomed.
Okay. And then the last, um, part I have is, I have a.
Could I, could I speak up to that?
Yeah, sure, Derek.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
The, um, I would love to look at any curriculum as well. Um, I would just add to the fact that the reason this curriculum is so well-done is, and, and this is why I would like to look at other curriculums because it, you know, we might be able to find a better curriculum, but this curriculum was, was met in the, in the way to meet the needs and not just the teachers and the students, but also the parents, both in rural and urban areas throughout the entire state of Illinois. Um, and it was also built on, uh, a curriculum that's already been vetted and proven evidence-based in, in, um, in Massachusetts. So, uh, but like I said, I would, I would love to compare because you're right, we need to be able to do our due diligence here. So, uh, I would love for you to share the curriculum that you're talking about.
Excellent, yep, I will do that. Um, another question I had was at, on the, one of the very first slides, it stated that we do first through 12th, but then on the rest of the slides, it only went down to third. Um, so my concern is, is that first was never brought up, even on the kind of elementary schools TBD, it was never brought up, but then also the idea of pre-K and K, um, that pre-K and K should also be part of this curriculum. And so my concern is the timeline and knowing that early childhood and that kindergarten first and second isn't included in the timeline or the phasing out. Um, and so I don't know if that is a limitation of the curriculum. If so, I'm definitely, some of the curriculum that I'll pass on to you, Derek, does touch on pre-K, K first and second, um, but I'm not sure if that was intentional or if that is something, um, that is TBD. I mean, like, because on the very first slide, as I said, it first, it said to first grade, we didn't see first grade again, and we never saw pre-K and K.
I think the, the, the priority was actually high school and getting it, um, getting it into the high school curriculum, and so everything else, it's, it's malleable, it's brand-new, um, the mandate just came out August 2019, um, amidst COVID and everything else going on. I'm, I'm pretty impressed that we were actually able to, I, I, I think as Derek and Becca mentioned, uh, no other district outside of the state of Illinois have gotten, I mean, outside of Chicago.
That's kind of like Illinois.
Yeah, as Derek said, it's the end of the day, outside of Chicago have gotten there yet. So I'm just, I'm just really super proud of the efforts and our progressiveness as a, as a district and, um, a real focus on, uh, you know, inclusivity, and, um, so definitely, we're definitely open to all sorts of ideas and continuing to expand and build.
Right. And Derek and Becca, I don't want you to take my questions as saying that I'm not for this, I am 100% for this. Most of my research is in this, like, I could definitely see, um, Banks and McIntosh's framework with the contributions additive transformational. I definitely see where the legacy curriculum is based, um, in a framework and in research. I just want to make sure that as, putting my board hat on, that we are doing, um, like I said, our due diligence to make sure we're doing the best for our school district, um, before we kind of quote approve something that will then be, be implemented. Um, so making sure we do include our entire district and not just down through, um, third grade. The last question I had was, um, starting with high school, knowing that we're going to be starting the Black History 365 in high school and then also adding this, I'm wondering if from the district level that that is, I don't want to say too much to ask, but a lot to ask of our teachers to do in January 2021, and if it would be better served to start, um, kind of at that level one with fifth grade or even third, fourth, um, maybe middle school instead of high school, so that the high school teachers don't feel overwhelmed with two brand-new curriculums or supplemental curriculums or however we want to state it, um, in January. So that's just something to think about as we're thinking about this timeline.
And Dr. Wilson is on that committee. She's our, um, curriculum expert, the director of instruction and, and so forth. So again, that's, you know, that, that discussion, that's where the decision comes out of, from that committee.
Also, thank you very much for those questions because the harder the questions, the more we compare and contrast, the better we're going to do right by every student in Peoria Public Schools. So I don't, I, I don't think you're against this at all. I, I, I think the harder questions you ask, the better for everybody involved. Um, but to answer that question, it does go to kindergarten. Um, it goes all the way down to kindergarten right now. We do not have a pre-K aspect to that, but it does go to kindergarten, and it goes to the contributions level-one approach.
Thank you.
Vice President Wilson?
Yes, thank you, President Shaw. Um, I guess first I would like to thank your organization and the members on the committee, uh, for putting together this important inclusive curriculum. Um, I do agree with Dr. Ryan King and believe that the, uh, the committee could be more diverse, include more people. Um, one thing that I noticed was missing was parents that are in our district. I think, uh, parents would, uh, would be a good group to, to add to the committee. Um, and speaking of that, there were some parent concerns regarding the subject matter that was presented to the primary students about two years ago. Uh, have these, uh, parent concerns been addressed in this curriculum?
Can you provide specifics? Two years ago?
Uh, well, I think I had reached out to you when we got all the emails. I think all the board members received emails on the subject matter that was presented to the grade school students. They felt it was too young to get the type of work that they were given regarding male and female and different things. Uh, does any other board members remember receiving these emails?
I remember the discussion, I do. I, I can, I can review and, and bring those, uh, messages back.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, you can always.
I believe I reached out to you, Dr. Karat, and you said that you were going to resolve it.
Yeah, but you're talking about two years ago, so I, I, I get a million. The thing is, this is a mandate, so as Mr. Walther said, you know, um, not everybody is, is, is necessarily.
I just want to make sure that the parent concerns that were brought up about two years ago is going to be addressed within this curriculum. We're not going to put out the same thing that parents and me included in a lot of different ways didn't agree with.
Yeah, I, I, I need more specifics, sir, I'm sorry, but two years ago with everything going on, I, 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 I'm good, but not that good.
I do remember those, Mr. Wilson. I remember you bringing them.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Walther. So I'll go back and I, I guess try to forward the emails over to you. Um, also, could you elaborate more on the community support, uh, that, that, that you kind of briefly mentioned in the presentation? Um, I think you said in regards to workshops and presentations?
Right.
Could you kind of explain to me what that looks like?
Yeah, absolutely, and it's, uh, the Black History 365 also has that component. Um, Becca, you want to, you want to take that one? But it's, again, it's all about educating the community on, on the curriculum, whatever it is, and, um, and all of the opportunities. And as Derek mentioned, um, there is also, um, it's also parent-friendly, and so, um, training the parents and exposing the parents to all of the aspects of the curriculum and how, you know, how robust and friendly it is. So I'll have Becca or Derek, you want to, you want to continue?
Yeah, absolutely. So the element of the community support there was really, um, in one aspect to address some of the concerns that you, uh, have already identified, that there may be families that when they hear that LGBTQ is going to be incorporated into history curriculum, they may have questions as to what that looks like. So at the baseline level, it would be to be able to share this curriculum with families that do have questions and have open and honest discussions about why this is a benefit, why it stands to benefit all students, not just students who identify within the community. Um, so those community workshops and different presentations that could be held could be, number one, as an avenue to educate parents about what the curriculum is itself and have a greater understanding there, um, but also offer support for families as well as students that may identify within the community. Um, one of our members of the committee, Jessica Brown, she is a dean of students at Eureka College, and she made a very important comment to us. Uh, she is well-versed in Safe Zone training and she facilitates these types of training opportunities, professional development for not only her colleagues, but also to support the students that she serves. And she identified a particular concern that needs to be addressed within the larger community is, as this curriculum is implemented, this may present an opportunity for a young person who does identify within the community to be experiencing all different kinds of thoughts and feelings. So for example, if you have a student who's participating in this curriculum, and this is the first time they've ever heard another adult reference the accomplishments and the contributions of somebody that is like them, they may feel extremely excited to hear that information. Other students may feel like they have this responsibility to take on that identity and represent that identity to the rest of their classmates. So if you have a student who is openly out as a particular identity, we want to make sure that that student doesn't feel like they have to take on the burden of telling the history or the context of what their personal experiences may be, that the curriculum will act as a standalone to make sure that we're incorporating inclusive education for all and not putting any particular student who identifies within that community on the spot to have to provide education for their peers that maybe don't have that experience. So really, those community workshop presentations are going to come back to that foundation of building safe and supportive environments for families of all backgrounds to openly ask questions in a way that they may be able to potentially learn something themselves, but then also find ways to support not only their but then also find ways to support not only their children, but the success of their children's classmates as well.
And Becca, you and I worked on a project, a situation at one of the schools nearby. Did you remember what we worked on specifically? It was a project you and I were working on at Von Steuben. I think that's, I think that's what Mr. Wilson is referring to.
Yeah, historically, just with, I mean, even just with the topic of the Holt Center and other community partners providing sexual health education to adolescents, that is still a controversial issue and that is well-understood. And the discussion of what is lesbian, what is gay, bisexual, transgender, that does occur in sexual health education. So we do have folks and parents and even teachers who reach out pretty regularly to better understand what the purpose of providing this information is and why is it that this information is provided in this particular type of curriculum. The context, however, of sexual health education and those discussions as to relationships and identities as they pertain to a person's sexual and reproductive health are not going to be the same as the conversations that occur in inclusive instruction noting the roles and contributions of the community in history. But there is an opportunity there in either realm to have an adult in the room that's facilitating curriculum regardless of its context to create an environment where students do not feel targeted for an identity, but students also feel supported in asking open and honest questions about things that maybe they don't understand in a way that can still be respectful towards families.
Thank you, thank you. And just, you know, for the record, I support this curriculum. It's very important, as I stated earlier. I, I just want to make sure that, that the parent concerns and teacher concerns and my concerns were addressed before I approve any curriculum myself personally. So Dr. Karat, I went ahead and sent you those emails that I received. There's a few of them there, just to kind of refresh your memory on those. But I do appreciate the information. I look forward to, to working with you on this.
Thank you. And to echo what Derek said previously, we really do appreciate the questions. We were hoping that you guys were going to have good questions for us because we understand our committee does need to be more well-rounded and we definitely do need parent representation. Coming from community health education and knowing how important youth voice is, I think we're also very much lacking in the youth realm representation of our committee members. So we are still in pretty early stages of this curriculum, so we appreciate those questions to make sure we're really challenging our thinking and really rolling out something that's going to be to the best benefit of our students. Thank you very much.
And we will, you know, we will have individuals who may sort of push back on that and we have to brace ourselves for that. And, and, and as the board knows, whenever we do have concerns, we look into it, we rectify it, and we move on. So will there, will there be lots of questions? Yes. And that's, that's the work that we do and that's, that, that won't be different than anything else, any new project that we take on. The piece that I like about this, as, as was referenced, the community piece, and parents really have, can have that, they don't necessarily have to be on the committee to, to number one, have a voice or to have the support. And I really like that, you know, the try, the, the three components of this approach in terms of support for families and support for the communities. If they're, you know, if they're having any challenges at home or, you know, with any other situation, there will be a group of individuals out there to help them. So that's, I think that's, that's pretty good.
Other input from board members? Mr. Tasty?
Yes, I have a question for Dr. Rankin. The programs that you're familiar with, is there any way that you could provide that information to us as a board? Just in case, we would like to kind of, you know, wrap our hands, wrap our heads around it prior to having a presentation. This is a lot of information. And so if we're going to be looking at a comparison, you know, I'd kind of like to be able to do it prior to a presentation. So I was wondering if you would be so kind as to provide that information to the board?
Yeah, I can send that on to the board. And kind of the biggest thing that I just want to echo what Derek and Becca were saying is that this is not sex education. So I know a lot of times when I have brought this up with districts outside of Peoria or even some people here in Peoria, understanding that this is not sex education, this is implementing history about LGBTQ individuals into our history curriculum. Not that, that's what you were saying, but I just want to kind of reiterate that. And so just making sure that, that that's kind of understood, that that's what the bill is asking. And so just kind of keeping that in mind. But yes, I will definitely pass along the other curriculums that, that I have either implemented or have coached districts on implementing for, for your, for your viewing.
Yeah, I'm happy you mentioned that, Dr. Rankin, because I think that, that question two years ago was, was related to sex education. Thank you.
Also, because there's some overlap here, if I may, I don't see why we can, I know that there's conversation about how the board's going to have to answer to this for the, the parents and the, and the community. It may be good to consider the board taking Safe, the Safe Zone training.
I think it's a great idea, Derek.
I'm sorry, I missed that. You said for the board to say?
It, it would be good if the board took the Safe Zone training and it would be able to give everyone on the board a, a better understanding of what's being taught to your teachers and that you would be able to be given the tools and the understanding of how to, to speak towards what we're teaching in the, in the school system.
Completely agree. Thank you.
All right. Other input from board members? Okay. I'd like to thank Becca Mathis and Derek Kimmler for your presentation tonight and looking forward to future presentation.
Thank you, folks. Much appreciated.
Yes, thank you.
Next, we have presentations by audience and would like to remind the two presenters to, of the five-minute limit and to also keep the comments respectful and constructive. First, we have Joy Kramer. Present is no longer here? Okay. And next, we have Marvin Hightower.
Good evening. Thank you, President Shaw and Vice President Wilson and to the rest of the school board. James Baldwin said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." Sherry Cannon and I had the privilege of serving on the Black Contributions Committee led by Board Member Ross and Lisa Gifford. And the first question that was posed, "Who are you?" That question was not about your name or where you work, but where do you come from? And I was one of the ones that was able to answer that question because my family had did a search and traced our roots back to Ghana, West Africa. And then we were bought here and was raised, my father, who was raised in Arkansas, then we migrated up to Peoria. There's more than I, there's more that I could say, but I'm cognizant of the time. But as a result of knowing who I am and where I come from, I am connected to my roots in ways some or most of our students are not. One of the things the National NAACP is calling for in our "We Are Done Dying Social Justice" movement is ensuring that every student of color receives a quality public education that prepares him or her to be a contributing member of this democracy. Edmund Burke said, "Those who don't know their history are destined to repeat it." We are at an inflection point in Peoria. We have a choice to make. We can continue doing the same thing and hope for a different outcome, or we can do what's necessary to make the changes that are vitally needed. And I recognize change is not easy. In fact, one of the things that resists change is tradition. Peoria Public Schools has traditionally taught black, black American history the same way, using some of the same materials at the same time to check the Black History Square, the Black History Month square. It's time for change and Black History 365 is part of that change. It's time for our real history to be taught, not just a watered-down whitewashed version. Changing the names of schools with white supremacist segregationist names is part of that change. And for the record, a president enslaving other human beings back in the day is a very big deal and it's, and it's bigger than the cost of removing a name off of a building. Changing the name is an investment in the future of our community. Doing business with minority contract, contractors and businesses is part of that change also, so I commend you on that as well. We would like to thank Dr. Karat, President Shaw, Vice President Wilson, and the entire school board for doing your part in facilitating change. The Peoria Branch NAACP stands with you as you move forward because Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Response to audience presentation. Dr. Karat?
Thank you, President Shaw. Mr. Hightower, you know, I, I love him. He's well-respected in our community and he's basically giving us an endorsement in terms of the direction we're heading and, and the work that we're doing. And we're doing some amazing work. Last board meeting, as he referenced, you approved the Black History Curriculum, which is pretty profound for Peoria Public Schools. I think as a district, we have been aspiring to get to that point for maybe, I don't know, over 40, 50 years, and that was accomplished. Tonight, we had some amazing discussion as we continue to focus on a, you know, more inclusive curriculum. We had the Legacy Project and heading in that direction. We'll continue to review additional materials that, that's out there, but that's heading in the right direction. On tonight's agenda, you will be voting for not only a recruiting officer, but I mean, recruiting an equity officer who's in the audience with us today to help, help us pull all that work together and the other equity work that needs to be done. As a district, equity is huge for us. You know, when we talk about the teacher pipeline, that's another piece that's associated with what Mr. Hightower talked about and all of the other pieces that go along with it, making sure, ensuring, you talk about ensuring that our kids, you know, are exposed to and are given high-quality rigorous education so they're, they're reading at grade level or higher and they're able to problem-solve and communicate and all of those things. So we're definitely, as a district, heading in, in the right direction. This is a progressive board and I just really appreciate the work. You know, Mr. Hightower mentioned, I didn't even know they were coming tonight, so he mentioned changes is not easy, it's very difficult. But we were tackling the tough work and we're having tough discussions and we're just sort of, you know, bulldozing our way through and doing what's right for our community and most importantly, for our kids. And I think in the end, you know, as we read in the paper, we saw two of our alumni who are donating over $400,000. These are Peoria Public School graduates. So we're rocking this community and what I'm proud of is not only working with the board, but also the progressive work that we're doing. So I'm sorry, Mr. Hightower got me going there, but thank you.
All right. Moving on to information items. Item number one, school improvement plans.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Hey, let's see. Oh, the school improvement plan. Oh, yeah.
Actually, both.
Oh, yes. Actually, it's a school improvement plan. It's my notes, I didn't bring my notes with me, but when I was a principal at Whittier and a principal at Roosevelt and the principal at Manuel, those are mandated by the state. Every school creates a plan to really improve and to improve reading and to improve student achievement overall. And it's, it's a requirement for the state to receive school improvement dollars. And so I just need to mention to you that all of the schools have done a very nice job with their plans and the idea is to craft a plan that is, you know, that is not only progressive but, and rigorous and robust, but will also improve student achievement. And, and then we'll, once I share it with you on the informational items, we will send it to the state tomorrow. So it's just, it's really just FYI for you. If you would like copies of it, I'd be happy to share, to share those with you also, but it's pretty routine. Thank you.
Any questions from board members on item number one? Okay. All right, you're up again. Item number two, which is?
Thank you.
Return to school plan update.
Again, good evening, board. President Shaw, Vice President Wilson. Just a quick update really regarding our return to school, our advancement plan. So this looks very familiar with you. This might be the fourth time you're seeing it. So we've just updated it for you. Michelle, may we go to the next slide? And you're familiar with that one. I really like that one. It's leading in times of ambiguity and, you know, the clarifying vision and creating instability. And I think we're really good at doing that. Lots of moving parts, a lot going on, but we're, I think, very proficient in trying to be as stable as possible. It's impossible to attain 100% stability, but despite what's happening, it's in a good place. And then item number three is also a very good one for us, too. We communicate with our families on a weekly basis. I do and principals, they do also, and it's very important to communicate early and often. And then you can see the other ones. Item four, we'll talk about that because I, I'll share with, you know, we talked about phase in. By the end of the month, all of the primary students will be in. And so the purpose of this today is for item four, develop ongoing course connections. So we'll talk about, you know, some possibilities and proposals and recommendations for middle and high. And then identify, identify the barriers we're facing. And of course, it's the virus still, along with many others. And then developing our early wins. We've gotten some early wins. I gave you a report on kindergartners, our first graders. The, the, the transition was fantastic. The students were very, very happy. I went to all of the buildings, had conversations with kids and staff. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. Overall, they're very, very happy to be with the primary students. Today, special ed students, self-contained special ed students started today, today for the A, those on A, A schedule. Tomorrow, those on the B schedule, because remember, we're still following the, the hybrid blended model. And then the team building, we're all working, working on this together. No man is an island. And you can see, we do have a COVID committee and they're very, very busy and actually very, very, you can, you can see the names. I don't have my, actually, I left my notes in front of, in, at my desk, but we have union representation, we have, we have teachers, we have, Thomas is on there, so HR is on there, Jerry's on there, Dr. Ike is on there, Josh is on there, Monica Hendrickson from the Health Department is on there. So yeah, it's, it's a very good group and they're working very hard for us. You've seen that before. When is the best time to bring, you know, our kids back? And we talked about, we, we, you know, we can bring kids back. We decided to go the middle. You can see the range, the range of cases and the positivity. As a board, we talked about, as long as it's within that range of 5% and, and/or we can identify where, you know, there were the trouble, you know, it's- where, you know, the trouble, you know, is coming from. Well, you remember, we talked about the university a couple of weeks ago, that it was a little high, higher than it should have been, and we were, but we were able to identify and locate the hotspot. And, you know, I'm pleased to report, Friday, that website, the matrix, Health Department matrix, is updated every week at about 1:00, 2:00 on Friday, and it's, the positivity rate is 4.7%, and it's a seven-day positivity rate, and you can see the new cases per 100,000, and it's 121. And so, let's go to the next slide. So, you can, here is a graphic depiction. It's, you can literally get a sense of what that looks like in terms of, I think somebody talked about ebbs and flow today, and it's trending in the right direction, right? So, that's looking really good. A piece that we have to talk about is the positive, the active positive cases for staff, and the top one is staff, and the bottom line, it's kids. And, but then, the one on my right-hand side, where it talks about current, my eyes are really bad, exclusions, actually, from the buildings. As you'll notice, the exclusions, it's really an interesting story, because the exclusions for the kids, you'll see, have gone up, and for a lot of reasons. Number one, we're bringing more kids back, but two, what's going on also is there is this household impact. So, if I'm having a tummy ache, or a headache, or runny nose, whatever, everybody, I mean, initially, it was just that one person. Now, the entire family is excluded, right, Mr. B? And so, that's interesting to continue to track. So, the entire household is impacted. So, yeah, moving to the advancement plan, you're very familiar with all of that. You've seen that about six or seven times, if not more, right, right, board? When we approved it under 22nd, and then, the advancement plan for fifth to seventh, as of October 12th, we're still kind of looking at the blended model. And actually, for the original plan, when you voted on that plan, June 22nd, it was the blended model, A/B, and the option for virtual learning, Acelus or Edgenuity. Acelus for K-8, and Edgenuity for high school. Let's see what the next slide brings. So, we have completed phases of the advancement plan, and I referenced kindergarteners and first graders. The first day was October 5th and 6th, and that went very well. As I said, I gave you an update on that. And then, self-contained students started today. Spoke with Dr. Bond, that went very, very well also. And so, the mitigation practices in the building, we continue to, you know, the mask, obviously, that's mandatory, and the splitting of classes is huge, so we're actually, we are actually, you know, splitting the population in half. The daily cleansing is important, the physical distancing is important, but the good news is an additional piece regarding mitigation practices. COVID, rapid COVID testing will be part of that. And as you know, and we have to give credit to the Gilmore Foundation, they provided $200,000 to Peoria Public Schools to roll out rapid COVID testing, and Dr. Rossi, who owns that Redditus lab, a graduate of Peoria Public Schools, will match Mr. Gilmore's support. And as we all know, Mr. Gilmore is a graduate, was a graduate of Manuel High, and he lived to be 100, 100 years old, and I think he passed on September 22nd, if I remember, and also was president of Caterpillar. And so, both of these grads, Peoria Public Schools graduates, they basically, they're collaborating with us to make the COVID-19 testing a normal part of our operations, providing even more access and more timely results. So, we can literally receive results between, you know, four to six hours, and so, those high quarantine numbers, if those results had gotten in a time, you know, we received those results in a timely manner, then they're cleared, free and clear, they can come back. So, that is, that's a big deal. So, it's an extraordinary generosity, and we wanted to thank them on behalf, again, of the board and our students, because they, you know, they're just really interested in the kids and their future, and helping out as much as they can, because our goal is to help children and staff get back to school, get back to the classroom quicker, and help classrooms and schools open. So, this opportunity will allow us to return to in-person instruction in a manner that minimizes the spread of COVID-19 without the necessary necessity of quarantining large numbers of students and staff. And again, as we said, this is tremendous. It's a game-changing donation, and this is, this is really what we needed to bring more students back sooner. Yeah, and so, yeah, I can go on reading, but I'll stop. And so, yeah, so the upcoming Phase Four of the advancement plan, I think I referenced that earlier, grade second, third, and fourth, they will be coming in, they'll be transitioning in in two weeks, October 26th, for those on A, the A schedule, October 27th, for those on the B schedule. So, let's go into the next slide, Michelle. And so, here's the recommendation. So, it's primary, and now, the conversation now is, so, what about middle, what about high? And so, the conversation, the recommendation to the board, needing consensus to continue to plan to bring in the middle schoolers in November. And so, what that looks like, fifth and sixth grade students, first day, is being proposed or recommended to be November 4th, the day after Election Day, and then, so you can see those on the A schedule would come in on the 4th, those on the B schedule would come in on the 5th, and so, fifth and sixth only in the building, just to kind of sort of, we really liked how K and 1 worked nicely, and then transition in the other ones. It was so easy, so seamless, so cohesive, and so, that's the same rationale and idea for middle school. And then, the seventh and eighth graders would transition in a week later, so we would give the fifth and sixth graders the 4th, the 5th, and then, the following week, the seventh and eighth graders would start on the 9th. Can we get the next slide, please? And so, that was Phase Five. So, then, Phase Six would be the advancement for high school. So, you just saw middle school, so high school, because, see, high school is so complex, and it is, it's unique and sort of complicated, which is complex, right? And with, because the staffing, they're so specialized, so the team, they've been thinking and planning and being creative and innovative, and so, the idea is identified students that need or request additional support will be provided options to learn in person through intentional planning and scheduling, using an open space concept before or by November 9th. And then, all remaining high school students, first day will be January 5th, and 6th for those, so it would be a clean start, second semester for sure, but still trying to salvage some of these days in November. There's still some things that can be done with the high schoolers because of the complexity of certification and specialization. And so, you can see the return to school timeline with, you know, it's everything that I've referenced, and so, I'll give you a few minutes to take, kind of take a look at And so, November 9th, we phase in seventh and eighth graders and high-risk, 9th through 12th graders, so that's the recommendation. What else do we have? Do we have another slide, Ms. Hyple? Okay, and you've seen, you've seen the bell schedule for the, you know, the three-tiered bell schedule. You have seen that, who's on what time? So, that's the proposal, board. Thank you. Thanks for listening. I'll take questions.
Questions for Dr. Rankin?
Can you, Michelle, can you go back to the one about high school? That, oh, up one. Can you explain further that first bullet point? It seems very ambiguous and wordy, but what does it actually mean?
Sure, I could do that. Dr. Wilson, I'll have you help me with it. It is, actually, it's different, and as I said, it's innovative, and so, yes, thanks for asking. We can help you with that.
Here are some students that need additional support. Distance learning is not working well for them, or they just need more time in person. And so, the buildings have really identified, many of those students are freshmen. They just haven't had the opportunity to have the high school experience and get themselves acclimated. So, each particular building has really been working with students, and they've been sort of bringing in some students as needed, but this would be much more intentional and focused, and really trying to create these open spaces where the high school students can come in, and we have some support for them. They would still be on MS teams, they would still be learning from their regular core teacher, but they might be in a space, and there might be self-certified, non-certified aides that can help support. So, it's not to replace anything, it's just to provide some support for on-campus learning.
And I was going to actually ask Mr. Atkins Dutroux to assist, because actually, it was Atkins Dutroux and Mrs. Toni Strong are part of that committee, and I said, guys, think outside the box, and let's not make it disruptive, because it's the high school, it's, you know, if, high school is just a totally different ball of wax. But it's still sort of keeping things intact, but also providing additional support for those who are struggling. Toni Strong, would you say that's a good characterization?
And so, is there a maximum number of students that are going to be allowed to do that? Allow, I don't, I mean, like, I don't know the right wording to use, but is there a max? Like, if we hit 100 and 101 comes, and you're like, ah, we don't have enough room? So, like, how is that being determined?
Yeah, so as you said, they will, it will be through intentional planning and scheduling, using open spaces, so they will, you know, they have the formula, and they'll be able to determine that. But all of those mitigation pieces that I referenced earlier, physical distancing, the ongoing cleaning, so forth, will be definitely, will be incorporated.
And then, my final question is, how will this impact teachers and certified and non-certified staff with this intentional planning of time? Because they're doing something now.
Right.
So, how is that going to impact them for this planning?
Yeah, great question, and I did ask that question also. I said, be creative, but then, it's like, yeah, it's nice and creative, so Dr. Wilson, take that one, please. Thanks.
The return to school committee, the principals have been thinking about this, and they'll attending tonight, they will meet with the return to school committee and kind of think about what that looks like. Richwood, Peoria High, and Manuel, as you know, have some differences to them, and so, they have different support staff that could be accessible at different times. So, we're letting them determine kind of what it looks like after they meet with their return to school teams, then the principals and I will just get together and just come up with maybe some general parameters, so there's some similarities, so there's some, you know, there's some equity across the board, but yet, the way Richwood brings in students or chooses students at Peoria High, it could be different based on these or that building. So, it's kind of a loose tight, if that makes sense. And they'll utilize the staff that's necessary. It could be different for each period, depending on who's in them now.
Other questions? Mr. Waller?
Yeah, and the January 5th, when we bring back all the students and stuff with it, I know we had an outline planned. How are you guys planning on doing the lunches for the high school? I know you can take care of the middle school and other stuff a little bit differently and easier and stuff with that, but with the high school, with our classes, how are you going to do that?
Yeah, my recommendation to the committee and the team, great question, Mr. Waller, is grab and go. A lot of my peers throughout the state of Illinois, that's how they're doing it, and so, kids on the way out, they're taking their lunches, and they're heading out with them. It minimizes a lot of, you know...
And I think with, when you've got this school cut in half, you can still use the lunchrooms, because there's enough distance between, I think, in doing that. I subbed at Dunlap a week ago, and that's what they've had to do. They had to do their spacing at the lunchroom, and they've done some other places where kids will eat, including some outdoor spaces. They had places outdoors where they had kids if the weather was, we're getting to the end of the season, we may not be able to do that, but, and I know, I went there the other day, some of the parochial schools, they had four or five classes that were outside, just trying to mitigate what's going, you know, what's going to go on.
Other input from board members? On the phone? Okay, so can you put that slide with the slate up there, that last slide with all the detail? I gave a pretty good interview this morning, and I have to disavow most of what I said, so I want to put that up there. This is the actual...
It's okay, it happens. So, the question is, what does that sound like to you as a board?
Can I ask one more question?
Are we, are we looking to do a consensus tonight?
I think that's probably the most appropriate, and so, yes, this is actually less aggressive than what I gave them this morning, so yes, I'm okay with this. Other board members?
Yeah, I just have one question. So, knowing kind of about the rapid COVID test, testing, how is that playing into this? Can you just talk a little bit about that, since I know that was a big, a news article this weekend?
Yeah.
Just to kind of make sure that everyone kind of hears how that's going to be implemented?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Rankin. You're in a zone today, actually. And so, the COVID committee, that I think it may have been the third or second slide, they are, and they are an amazing rock star committee. They're in the process of ruling it out, but theoretically, the idea is obviously testing, doing random testing also, and the, what we talked about was really testing everybody, and so, let's say you have, you know, 300 kids in the building, and so, and you divide it by five, and so, you'll do, you'll test, they'll be tested a chunk at a time, and so, it's also, it was on that, where it says asymptomatic, asymptomatic, and so, obviously, the ones with symptoms automatically will be tested, and then, in addition to that, in order to really stay open and mitigate any, as much as we can, everybody will, at some point, everybody will be tested a number of times, but they're still building it, they're still building that rollout. They have to work with Dr. Rossi, and we have some other partners who may be willing to help us. So, there's still a lot of work that needs to go there, but theoretically, students and staff will be tested. And you may have a testing policy coming to you at the next board meeting. I sent it to Vice President Wilson, when was it, I think Friday, so that it can go through the policy committee, and we will have that on the next board agenda for our next board meeting.
So, I'm looking for consensus on the plan. Mrs. Kostick? Dr. Rankin?
Yes.
I'm okay with it. I've got a couple of other questions, but we need to get the consensus first.
Okay, okay. Mr. Klaus?
Yep.
Vice President Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yeah, one of the things, just really a comment on the testing, Dr. Karat and I have talked about this for weeks and stuff with it, and this is really a gift, because Because one of the things that it really does, if you can identify a student that appears to have symptoms, which you can get a positive test, that all of a sudden takes that whole family from being added to the thing. It takes a teacher from being 10 days in school. It frees up both substitutes and families. It does a lot of things that we didn't have. And so it's, I mean, it really is a gift and it will help us doing that. And then I actually had a comment too for Mrs. Rose in your committee. I did a school visit and I was at Glen Oak. And I just want, is there any, those kids, they weren't overly crowded, but they were a little packed and stuff with that. In my understanding, are they there four days a week and then they get the one day off and stuff with that? What's their schedule during the day?
It depends on the school. They do reading and math, and they integrate the science and social studies. And they have encore time during the day through teams. The primary goal is to do a lot of teams type of activities so that if you do go into a retreat mode, the kids know exactly what to do as far as functioning through, managing through the, through the different platforms that they are given. So they do that during the school day as well.
Okay. There seemed to be a lot of learning going on. I just know that it seemed they were inside that classroom a lot. And I just was wondering if there's any way, do they get PE once?
They get PE every day. And they get encore, depends on the building. They get art, music, and some buildings have technology, some buildings don't. Technology is basically what they're doing through MST's and online platforms. They have the ability to go into different online platforms that we have in addition to MST's and schoolers. They're able to get the sites that we purchase for ELs. So they're able to do the language and as well as like reading and reading, things that the general regular divisional students have.
And then the last question I have is for Dr. Kratt. With us going back, have we seen any migration from people who were on Acelis that wanted to go back into the classroom? Was there a change for that?
Yes, actually, thanks for asking, and I'll send that to you. We're still compiling that. It will be, it will be interesting to see the data from middle because now they'll, they'll really have just two options. Middle should be an interesting group to watch because it seems like high school, well, high school will have some flexibility, right? And, but the middle, they'll either have to select, they'll either have to select the hybrid or that, you know, the Acelis, the platform, the instructional platform. Thank you, Ms. Strong. So we'll see what happens.
What about, we've had some teachers that had medical reasons, they couldn't do that. I figured you've talked with the union about that, how is that going to work from? They've been working at home, but now with them back in the buildings.
Yeah, thank you, sorry. There's a committee that's, there's a committee, it's like my microphone. There is a committee that's working together on that. And so all of those things are well thought out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. B.
Okay. Any other input before we close out the plan? Okay, thank you, Dr. Kratt.
Thank you very much.
On to item number three, salary compensation report. Were there any questions from board members? Mr. Waller?
I have a question for Mr. Willis on this. As I went through, I was looking through here and I couldn't find Mr. Willis. And then all of a sudden, I did. You go by, you don't go by Archie, do you? So found that, Mr. Willis, didn't mean to point that out, but I was looking through there. Where the hell is Mr. Willis on this report? Then I see, well, there's an Archie Willis here. Appears to be reasonably similar. The question I had, however, on a more serious note, is that according to 105 Ellis 510, 102047, there's supposed to be base salary and benefits of the district superintendent and all administrators and teachers. I find six or seven missing from here, starting from the top on down. I don't see Dr. Kratt in here, or Dr. Wood, or Dr. Wilson. Were they in another place? Did I miss him?
I'm not in there.
Yeah, no, you saw your own. I mean, it was, maybe I missed him, I'm sorry. That's why I was correcting. I said I may have missed it, but I thought there's administrators page, I just didn't see him on that, so.
There's sand, I found Dr. Wilson, okay. It must have been in a different piece of the page.
I should be in there, I saw it, found it. Everybody's on it.
Okay. Okay, good.
Legally, we have to do it.
Yeah, no, I thought so. But that last page, which I thought had all the administrators, including Archie, was.
No, the, the last page has administrators other than certified.
Okay.
And then certified administrators are sprinkled throughout the report.
Gotcha.
Alphabetically.
Yeah, it didn't seem like you'd missed that. Thank you. No more questions?
Other questions on item three? Seeing none. Item number four, proposed expenditures over $2,500. Questions for Mr. Willis? Seeing none. Item number five, report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests. Dr. Kratt?
Thank you so much, President Shaw. Since our board meeting on September 28th, we have received one new request. There was also one pending request noted on September 28th. All were completed. And to date, we have received 44 requests for this calendar year at a cost of $1,550. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kratt. We have come to the consent agenda. Vice President Wilson, if you please.
Thank you, President Shaw. Give one second here as I scroll up. Okay, President Shaw, the consent agenda consists of the following items. Item one, gifts to school district. Two, payment for travel. Three, human resources report. Four, approval of NWEA web-based measures of academic progress, math reading and language assessment license renewal. Item five, Reed 180 and System 44. Six, settlement agreement with Bonnie Guthrie. Seven, annual renewal with Blackboard for communication services for the 2020-2021 school year. Item eight, National Principals Month. And that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Wilson. Are there any items that board members would like remove for, would like, remove for a separate vote? Other items? Seeing none. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item number five?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on the consent agenda excluding item number five? Seeing none. Please call roll.
Mrs. Kastik? Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin? Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
President Shaw?
Aye. Is there a motion to accept item number five?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Kastik?
The only question that I, that I had on that, the only reason that I pulled it is that I was trying to remember originally when we approved, like, the Acelis and everything. Was this Reed 180 at that time, was that a part of the CARES grant? That we, that we approved this under, or is this something different?
Dr. Wilson? This is, this is to replace materials and to add in, I think, they're adding a school. You want to take that?
The CARES grant, I'm sorry, what?
CARES.
CARES.
CARES grant, okay, I'm sorry.
No, it does not have anything to do with CARES.
This is, this is part of the school improvement grant. Is that the question, funding?
Mm-hmm, yes, it is.
So under the ill and power, do we have underperforming and lowest performing schools? And they receive additional money to provide supplemental materials for schools that are different than other schools. And so these particular schools have been implementing Reed 180 and System 44 for the last year. So this is not district money, this is completely a grant money.
Okay, okay.
You're welcome.
Other discussion on item five?
I just have a question. Can you describe the difference between Reed 180 and System 44? Are they the same thing? They have two different names?
Yeah, they're related. Systems 44 is more for lower level, like, I think, third grade and, and below and, or something like that. But it's, it's all grade span.
It's related.
So they're, yep, one, sis is the lowest, and then 180, it's higher, yep.
Other discussion on item five? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Kastik? Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin? Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
President Shaw?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carries.
Okay, deliberation agenda, item number nine.
Expulsion with the expulsion to be held in abeyance to proposed action is that the expulsion with the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated October 12, 2020 be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, will you please call a roll?
Mrs. Kastik, aye. Mr. Klaus?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson?
Are you muted?
I'm sorry, I was on mute, aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
President Shaw?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven ayes.
Okay, presentations and suggestions by board members. Mrs. Ross?
Yeah, I have a brief clarification. No, as we talk about curriculums, and I think, Dr. Kratt, you said that the Senate Bill 246 was since last August, it just came out this year in July, July 1, 2020. And that, that doesn't matter, but I guess what I want to make sure is that, you know, we are incorporating everything in what we do. And I've always, we've been working with the LGBTQ community for a number of years with a lot of different things. So everybody needs to be recognized for what they, what they're doing. Much of the information in the Black History curriculum is also points out those contributions, you know, for all, all different types of people. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. It wasn't, although we've been working on, you've been working on it a lot longer, this particular law just came out. And it's related to any federal grants, grant money that we would receive that we have to do this particular program. Yeah, I mean, kudos to the board. This work is, you know, you're trailing, you're leading the pack in terms of this work. Which leads me to, actually, you've just approved our recruiting and equity officer. If you don't mind, I would kind of like to quickly introduce her to you, is that okay?
Definitely.
Dr. Bott?
Please take the podium and welcome to Peoria.
She's looking forward to moving to Peoria, she wants to get out of Chicago.
I am truly honored to join Peoria Public Schools in a very important role for the district. Supporting outcomes for all students to succeed and have access at their fullest potential has been the heart and the passion of my work in education. In addition, hiring the most talented educators for the school is a strong asset I bring to Peoria. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working on your behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr., uh, just gave you a PhD.
You did. I appreciate that, sir. No, I have, I was going to bring them with me, but I'll, I'll forward it to you. There is a workshop presented by the Illinois Association of School Boards. It's a virtual one that's going to be next week. And it has to do with input from the board, the hiring of administrators. And we're not doing a superintendent search, Dr. Kratt, so I don't want you to get nervous.
That's fine.
But this, this was about the input that you should have, and it has a list of the different administrators that should be considered. And so I'll just forward that on to the board for that.
Other presentations and suggestions by board members?
I don't, I don't have a presentation, but I do want to just make a comment. I wanted to welcome, I, Dr.?
Bott.
Dr. Bott, okay. I wanted to welcome you and hope that, you know, being the senior person, senior board member, I have, you know, I've experienced a lot of change. And what I, what I think works better is when we incorporate the talents of people that, you know, makes a better connection. So I'm welcoming you and hope that you'll be able to recognize the talents in our district.
Absolutely, building on strengths is what I'm studying.
Right.
Other presentations and suggestions by board members? Seeing none. Reports from board committees?
We're going to meet, building committee. Mrs. Kastik and I are hosting on the 15th, this month at 3:30.
Okay.
The parent-teacher advisory committee sent out from Thomas this evening, sent out a survey. The link doesn't work right now, but I just sent that to Thomas, so he'll be fixing it.
Already fixed it.
Already fixed it. So we do, Mrs. Ross and I really would appreciate it if families and teachers would please fill out that survey. We're talking about discipline and any maybe discipline policies or other types of things that are happening during remote learning and struggles that parents and teachers may have so that we can start to think about that at the district level.
And I just want to make sure that our parents and teachers know that this, although some of the questions in the survey are not related too much to discipline, we will segment out those things that, that are pertinent to the committee. Okay, thank you.
Other, other board committees?
Yes, the policy committee will meet October 21st at 3 o'clock.
Thank you, Vice President Wilson. Are there any other committee, committee input? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned.